We'll be reconvening the meeting in just a moment. Leave that the systems are working properly now. And thank you, everyone, for your patience, both in the meeting and those who may be watching it at home either live run on recording. I know many of us have been in about a 10,000 Zoom meetings in the last several weeks. And they all have challenges, but I know our team here has been excellent at designing and structuring, setting up these meetings. Technically, and then also all the participants and members of the council have been extraordinary in making sure that meetings run as smoothly as possible. All right, so we have all, we're all back now. So let's reconvene. And that brings us, we were at the consent agenda. Mr. Laurel, did you have any items to remove or to change from the consent agenda? Or was that the only issue before us that you had?
That wasn't anything.
Okay, so any items on the consent agenda that members of the council wish to remove versus separate question or comment?
Number seven.
Number seven, all right.
Number eight.
All right, then let's proceed first to item seven, which is consideration of a proclamation declaring April 2020 as child abuse prevention month. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure again to speak on item number seven. The proclamation declaring April 2020 as the child abuse prevention month. As my colleagues are well aware, child abuse is one of my passions as far as fighting it. I've been a sex assault and child abuse prosecutor for several years and just recently resumed my duties on the team at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. This, this proclamation is, or excuse me, this resolution is being received by the Yolo County Children's Alliance and the Yolo County Child Abuse Prevention Council. And on behalf of the Yolo County Children's Alliance, where I'm the Chair of the Board, I'd like to introduce a new parent guide to both my colleagues and the members of the public who are watching tonight. As you all know, I mean, it's very difficult during these times for parents and families alike to navigate uncharted waters, but also to deal with the abnormal stresses with being not only sequestered in your home, but not being able to navigate the normal institutions and you know, whether that's going to work or going to school or whatnot. And sometimes folks don't, even if they're highly functioning, those functions, those, the skills that we normally have can be completely challenged. And what we're noticing a lot is that while child abuse numbers or reports haven't skyrocketed as one would expect, it's just a matter of the reporting that might not be as the reporting itself that might not be skyrocketing. And that might be also largely attributed to the fact that some of the normal avenues for disclosure for children have been removed, such as school nurses and school counselors and teachers and their friends and whatnot. So with that, this, the guide handling your child's challenging behaviors at every age is available from YCCA and the Child Abuse Prevention Council. It's a new resource for parents and caregivers to provide positive discipline tips and resources to handle challenging behaviors for babies, toddlers, preschoolers, school-aged children, and teenagers. Now, the guide and previous parent guides on self-care, handling stress, dealing with emotions, and ways for parents and children to connect are particularly important during this pandemic. We know that it's a stress factor for child abuse and neglect, and we know that parents need a lot of support now. So I want the community to know that the guides are available in English, Spanish, and Russian on the Yolo County Children's Alliance website, which is yolokids.org. Please take a look and if, even if it's not for you or you don't think it's for you, please share it with folks and keep an eye out for our neighbors. And thank you again, Mayor and members of the council for receiving this resolution and furtherance of child abuse prevention month.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Item eight, then, is consideration of a proclamation recognizing May 7, 2020 as the big day of giving here in West Sacramento. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you. And this, this online giving day is here around the corner in just over two weeks. And as, as I think all the members of the council know, and the community is pretty familiar with this as well. This is organized by the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. It provides 20, 24 hours to give to nonprofits that sign up to participate. And there are 615 nonprofit organizations that have signed up for this year. And since 2013, it's generated over, well, just about $40 million for the nonprofit organizations that serve our communities. Many that are signed up this year are in West Sac and in Yolo County. And as we all know, and we'll be discussing it a little bit later today in our meeting, they need our help now more than, more than ever. And because it's already in an online format, it's actually pretty much set up for shelter-in-place giving. And so I'm, I'm, I'm happy that this proclamation is for us tonight. You can give at wwwbigdayofgiving.org. The day is on May 7, but they're already pre-scheduling gifts that just opened up on Monday. So I encourage folks to take a look at that. And as we have in the past, West Sacramento comes and dig on, on the big day.
Right, thank you, Mayor Protem Sandin. So those are the only comments we had on the consent agenda. So is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt.
Well, second, right, it's been moved by Councilmember Rose Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
And Mayor Baldwin.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 10, which is a public hearing to consider Resolution 20-36, adopting the 2020 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And so we'll turn to the staff report on this item. Jacobson, are you with us?
I will be presenting this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to request that the council open a public hearing to solicit the comment on the draft 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and to authorize Resolution 2036 approving the annual action plan for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The 2020 Annual Action Plan addresses the fifth and final year within the current five-year CDBG consolidated plan. For the 2020 program year, the city was allocated $467,314 in CDBG entitlement fund. Additionally, staff anticipates an estimated $30,000 in program income funds and $55,000 in prior year resources. In total, the city will have $552,314 to allocate towards CDBG eligible activities. Of this amount, $458,852 has been allocated to support a sidewalk frontage improvement project within the Washington neighborhood along ENF Streets between Fifth and Sixth. These improvements will allow for improved connectivity, walkability, and ADA access to and from public amenities, given that existing conditions provide no safe pedestrian access. These improvements will be located within two blocks of three affordable housing developments and a new planned residential development directly to the north. Finally, this project is in support of a high priority goal within the five-year consolidated plan, which is achieving the goals identified within Washington Realized. The remaining $93,462 will be allocated towards planning and grant administration. I do want to note that the annual action plan tonight does not account for the additional CDBG funds that the city will receive as a result of the CARES Act, known as CDBGCB funds. Staff is currently assessing the best use of the additional CDBGCB funding and will be returning to the council in the coming days with a proposal and an amendment to the annual action plan for the council to consider. This concludes my brief presentation, but I will be available after the close of the public hearing to answer any questions the council may have.
All right, are there questions, Mr. Werthe at this time? All right, so we will formally open the public hearing on this. And Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony on item nine? Sorry, item 10, item that we're trying.
No comments received for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for further questions or discussion. Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, I had a question regarding the proposed plan development, the housing. What is the timeline for that to be developed?
Are you talking about the improvements along ENF Street?
No, the improvements I understand, but it's to help as far as pairing it with some proposed housing development that's going to be happening in the area. So it's, it's, that's.
So correct. So it's not necessarily tied directly to that project, but it will be benefiting the project in the long term. Once that project gets off the ground. To be honest with you, I am not familiar with the time schedule of that particular project because, again, the improvements are standalone, they stand by itself, they're not directly tied to that specific project. I know that one of my colleagues has been working with the developer and on getting all the entitlements completed and everything else so that plans can be submitted, but I can tell you an actual timeline at this point.
All right, further questions or discussion? It comes from member Ledesma.
Thank you. Just, Will, thank you for, for the update. And I know we've put a lot of work into the Washington neighborhood already with some funding and on the neighborhood improvements. And I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this out. And certainly I went by there, okay, on Sunday, and just, I really hadn't walked some of the sidewalks and areas in that area, but fully supportive of this. And I just want to thank you for bringing this back to us. And, and I know the, the Washington Realized Plan and all the projects within it are just really important. So the fact that we can use some of these funds towards that is, is important. But I just want to thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ledesma. I, I agree. This is one, this is the original neighborhood of West Sacramento. And it is, has, has been for a century, one of the most challenged economically. And the investments that we've been able to make in the Washington District from the Washington Realized Plan going forward have been significant. And the CDBG program has been a key, a key part of that investment strategy as well as other dollars. And it has, it makes a big difference in the neighborhood, just the basics that, that other neighborhoods sometimes take for granted, bike sidewalks and bike lanes that were installed with new developments. But when you're, when you were a new development in 1848, you just don't get those kind of, those things weren't included in, in projects at that time when Margaret Medel was mapping out the Washington District. So it's, it's high time that these improvements are happening. They will support future development, but that's only because they will continue to make this neighborhood even, even a better place to live and more walkable and more social and more supportive of kind of quality of life that people want to, want to have. And so I'm definitely supportive of this. With respect to the, I just want to say with respect to the, of the special CARES Act allocation for CDBG, I hope we'll be bringing that back if, if the time allows us to do so, either in conjunction or immediately after the consideration of our, of our, the council's workshop on the city's fiscal situation. I don't want to, I, I want to not be in a position where we're making, we're approving investments out of the CDBG fund or considering them in advance of looking at the overall situation and fiscal condition that the city is in. Those funds can't be used to backfill, you know, city, regular city costs and that sort of thing. But we will, we will need, we will very much need to have a consolidated strategy with respect to the investments that we're making there to support one another.
Agreed. Definitely. We'll make sure to coordinate with, with that as well.
All right, seeing no further questions or discussion, is there a motion on item 10?
And Mr. Mayor, I'll make the, I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's everybody, Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye, and I think it was Councilmember.
Does Mayor Protem Sandin or?
Yes.
Oh, Sandin, okay, sorry.
And Mayor Baldwin.
Aye. All right, so that motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us into item 11, which is consideration of Resolution 20-31 and First Reading of Ordinance 20-6, amending the contract between the City Council of the City of West Sacramento and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System per Section 2516, the employee cautionary for members of the West Sacramento Firefighters Association. Ms. Montez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So on August 21, 2019, the City Council approved the Successor Memorandum of Understanding between the City and the West Sacramento Firefighters Association with represented members of the union ratifying that agreement also on August 5, 2019. A new negotiated term in the successor MOU included implementing an employee cost share of the city's CalPERS contribution rate. In order to implement that cost sharing agreement, the city's retirement contract with CalPERS must be amended. The contract amendment process requires our governing body to adopt a resolution and an ordinance. The planned effective date of this contract amendment for the affected employees in the Firefighters Association will be the pay period inclusive of July 1, 2020, at which time those employees will begin paying an additional half a percent of their employee contribution, excuse me, towards the employer rate. Effective pay period inclusive also of July 1, 2021, affected employees will contribute an additional half a percent for a total of 1% contribution towards the employer rate. An additional step in this contract amendment process also is an employee election. Affected employees in the union will hold a secret ballot election after presuming you guys approve the amendment as well as the ordinance. And they will, as the cost sharing agreement increases their employee contribution rate, which triggers that election. Staff will return to council for a second reading and adoption of the ordinance on May 20, 2020, to be in compliance with the government code. It's estimated that the cost sharing provision will save the city approximately $31,000 to the general fund in fiscal year 2020, 2021, and approximately $65,000 in fiscal year 2021, 2022, and beyond. The savings was factored into the development of the annual budget process for the additional terms of the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Firefighters Association. This process to amend the contract has been coordinated with appropriate staff at CalPERS, as well as the West Sacramento Firefighters Association has been apprised of the steps and progress of the contract amendment process thus far. Staff is respectfully recommending that the City Council adopt the resolution of intention to approve the amendment to the contract with CalPERS and waive the first reading and read by title and number-only ordinance 20-6, approving the amendment to the contract between the city and CalPERS. The presentation and discussion of the ordinance 20-6 are eliminated as council previously approved the cost sharing provision when the memorandum of understanding was approved back on August 21, 2019. Thank you for your time, and I'll be available for any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you, Ms. Montez. Are there questions for staff? Or discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion on item 11? Councilmember Roscoe.
It's moved.
Well, second, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Roscoe, seconded by Councilmember Ledesma, seeing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the role on item 11.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Baldwin.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you, Ms. Montez.
Thank you.
Then we'll proceed now to item 12, which is an update in actions on the city's COVID-19 response actions. As the city manager is coming up to the podium, I just want to report on the, more fully on the, on the progress or lack thereof on the federal appropriations that were to be part of what has loosely been termed 3.5, the 3.5 phase of the relief provisions that Congress was considering. Speaker Pelosi and Senator Schumer had proposed a significant allocation for cities and some for counties and for states. And there were negotiations that have been happening since our last council meeting in earnest. The House supported those. And over the weekend, the White House made it very clear publicly that they would not support any appropriation for cities and for counties, zero. And because the, apparently, the White House believes that if, if cities and counties are starved, that they will be forced to revoke the stay-at-home orders. Of course, virtually knows, other than New York City and a handful of others, cities in America are not the ones that have established the stay-at-home orders, we're simply enforcing and executing them. But, and, and it was a ridiculous position in the first place, but, but all weekend long, the White House is making calls to block a penny from coming to cities and counties despite the tens of billions of dollars that was in the proposal that most members of Congress were also supportive of. And so as a result, the, the bill approved by the Senate or this week includes nothing at all for cities and for counties in, in, in the relief package. And the Treasury Secretary has indicated that the administration is likely to support something for states and local governments in the next package. We don't know what that means. We don't know if that's true. It hasn't been true in the last three versions of the packages so far. And obviously, it is essential. There are cities across the country that are in the, that are teetering on the verge of bankruptcy. Senator McConnell has said that they should just go into bankruptcy. But as the council knows, we're not, we are not eligible for the PPP support that's available for both small businesses and for large corporations. We're not eligible for, we don't get any unemployment benefits, and that's the only thing to support the city. So we're in a precarious position and in cities in particular and counties that are the, have been the first responders on the pandemic. And the costs that we're facing have been significant. And we're still tallying them and our revenues are down. Now, cities in other parts of the country and other parts of the state are facing even more significant challenges fiscally. And I also want to point out that we are, we, we don't appear to be at a stage where tomorrow we're going to be making massive cuts, but we don't know that for sure yet. And so at, at, at one point, I want to just emphasize that as we read about Santa Barbara laying off hundreds of people or Los Angeles moving to furlough thousands of people, or Cincinnati laying off their, their assistant city manager or Santa Monica, the city manager leaving, that, that, that what we're seeing in other cities is not here yet. But one of the reasons why the council has been so insistent since this pandemic began that we really pay close attention to the, to the financial aspects of it and the impact on city operations and our ability to maintain core services, the public safety services and infrastructure and water and everything else, this has been that the implications are quite severe in the federal government to the point, other than a very small CDBG appropriation that was discussed, has not, has not set it forward. So with that, Mr. Laurel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Also, thanks, thanks again for the patience earlier as we worked out the technical difficulty. I just double-checked again and it appears to be all working just fine now. So tonight, we are, in addition to me giving the weekly COVID-19 update on the city's response actions and data about the outbreak. We do have one proposed action item that's a follow-up from last week's discussion that has to do with the Yolo COVID-19 Relief Fund. I'll just make a short introduction to that and then turn it over to Vice Mayor Sandin, who's been leading the effort on following up on some of the discussion from last week. The short of it is that she, through the work of meetings with the other elected officials and the staff at the foundation, was successful in getting some of the changes that we were requesting to the governance and grant-making structure. So I think I'll, I'll turn it over to her to describe what transpired in the last week. I'll open it up for council discussion. But to be clear about the recommended action, it is status recommendation that we proceed with adopting the budget resolution tonight that would allocate 25,000 of one-time general funds to the COVID-19 relief effort. It would leverage, just like I said last week, the other funding from Yolo County, the City of Davis, and the City of Woodland, which at this point is, it totals 325,000. So with that, I'll close my comments and turn it over to the council.
Thank you, city manager. The, as was mentioned, the, and I mentioned this earlier tonight, the Leadership Advisory Committee of the Yolo COVID-19 Relief Initiative met last Thursday. And we took up several issues that our council had discussed, as, as the city manager mentioned the evening before, including governance and oversight concerns. And the Leadership Advisory Committee is made up of elected officials from each jurisdiction in Yolo County and community representatives of local health systems, as well as a representative from UC Davis. And will be involved in the oversight of the steering committees' grant recommendations. And in addition, last week at our meeting, we also affirmed the grant granting criteria and the process and the fundraising strategy. And then I also learned, one of the concerns I shared last week was the overhead costs that I learned that Yolo County is footing the bill for the consultants that are working on the initiative. And because the proposal for us tonight is to contribute 25,000 and the funds already, as, as the city manager mentioned, at $325,000, nonprofits servicing West Sacramento are likely to benefit in excess of our contribution. So in addition, I wanted to mention that, in addition to the Leadership Advisory Committee, as I believe the council knows, we're also represented on the steering committee, which is, as the city manager described in the report, is, is similar to what we know as a technical advisory committee to a number of the other, other committees and commissions on which we serve. And we're represented by our Parks and Rec Director, Tracy Michael, on that, on that committee. In addition, the, there is going to be a volunteer corps that is organized to raise additional funds for the effort. And I'm happy to share with you, after getting the green light from him last night, that our former mayor and county supervisor, Mike McGowan, will be heading that up, that effort. So a volunteer corps made up of former elected officials, as well as some other leaders raising funds, in addition to what the cities and counties have brought already to the, to the fund. And just as a reminder, we're talking about the action before us is about the fund, but there are really three prongs to the initiative, which is the, the relief fund itself and then a donor education, which really is meant to have members of Yolo County and West Sacramento community give directly to the nonprofits themselves. So the fund is not in competition with the efforts to actually have folks in the community give to the nonprofits, and it will be coordinated with Big Day of Giving effort that we proclaimed earlier in the meeting, as well as the third prong is tech, technical, technical assistance to nonprofit organizations. And there, that's happening through a number of webinars and other resources, online resources that the Yolo Community Foundation is providing to nonprofits in the county. So just in this past week, I've had discussions with Jessica Hubbard, who is the executive director of the Yolo Community Foundation, Nathan Dietrich, who is president of the West Sacramento Foundation. I've talked with our representative on the steering committee, Tracy Michael, as well as Mike McGowan, as I mentioned, is co-chairing the volunteer corps. So I'm happy to provide additional information. I feel like a lot of the concerns that we did raise last week in our meeting have been addressed. And I feel confident that this is, right now, the best thing we can do for the nonprofits in West Sacramento.
All right, thank you so much for, for all of the, the work in just this last week and for your, your leadership and for your commitment to, to continue at this and to build a partnership in, both in our own community and county-wide in order to, to do everything that we can to support both our fragile nonprofits, but also the people that they serve and the institutions that they serve and the, and the legacy that they preserve in our, in our region. Those, that, those that deal with human services and those that deal with protecting our natural environment and others, they're, they're just really essential parts of our community. And you cannot rebuild them with a snap of a finger. And so it's so critical that we're, that we're working together in order to, to provide the necessary support where we possibly can. So thanks for, for your leadership in this work. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank Mayor Protem Sandin for getting involved in providing leadership for West Sacramento. Experiencing at the Yolo Food Bank Distribution, the great demand and, and recent closures of our food pantries and other necessary support. and other necessary support for our community. And, you know, we're, we've been scaled back quite a bit as far as nonprofits. And so this foundation and our $25,000 that we are providing will go, you know, pretty far to be able to help our community. In the public comment that was provided shows that there are, there are members of our community who are struggling and really concerned about, you know, what's going to happen with their housing needs, what's going to happen, you know, with food and interacting with many people. I I am hearing a lot about the demand and for additional support. So our unemployment, you know, rate is going up significantly high, and we just don't know. It's really unclear what our recovery will look like in as far as moving forward in the next coming months for our economy. So I'm really glad that former Supervisor McGowan is going to be on the board and will be well represented. Thank you.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. I just want to echo both my colleagues' comments. Thank you, Mayor Protem Sandin, for all that you've done. I mean, you have an extraordinary background when it comes to nonprofit work, but also with fundraising and philanthropy. So you're the right person for this effort. And I appreciate all the work you've done to get us to the point where we are today, as we sit in this meeting today. So I'm fully supportive. You know, nonprofits are the lifeblood of our community, especially in West Sacramento. As we all know, we've all participated in several of the efforts that have essentially connected people, not only with education, but also with like food and just the basic necessities. And that's so much more pronounced right now. So anyhow, I I appreciate all that you've done and big kudos to you, colleagues.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Nope, just thanks, Babs. Thanks, Mayor Protem, Protem. Just I know you've been putting in the work and the leadership and it it it's showing. And just a big shout out to our friend and our our sixth member of the Beatles, I guess he is, Mike McGowan. Thank you for recruiting him. I'm sure it wasn't hard for him to get involved in this. And when we're out of the social distancing part of this, I'm sure he'll recruit the a certain band to come out and help raise some money for everybody and we'll be ready to go. So but but Mayor Protem, thank you so much. I know there's a lot of work and thank you for listening to us. Really appreciate it.
All right. So with that, we'll turn to Mr. Laurel for the remainder of the report. And just as a reminder, and particularly and those, for him, this might be the first meeting or a virtual meeting you're watching, the council is meeting on a on a on a weekly basis during this, during a declaration of emergency period. And each week, the council devotes its entire meeting to the city's COVID-19 response, except for one meeting a month. And this is the meeting in which we conduct other city business. And for that reason, tonight's item 12 may be shorter than our than our weekly reports on this item, but it remains critical. And so the like the key actions and from the from the prior week and what's coming up next are before us. Thanks to Mr. Laurel. Mr. Laurel, would you proceed with the item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, I will have just a fairly brief update tonight. I'll update you on maybe four or five items. But just to get right into it, we'll start with the updated numbers on COVID-19 in in West Sacramento and Yolo County. You can see from the tables, the chart is included in the first page of the report. Again, a reminder to everyone, the the yellow cells are what's updated. So if you're reading ahead, you can look at those updates. But there are 46 cases still in West Sacramento. I say still because as of today, I've got updated numbers. There were no new reported cases today. However, there were five new reported cases in Yolo County. So just looking at the recent history on on those two sets of data, we we have had a downward trend this week. I wouldn't put too much stock into that because we really don't know what next week will hold. But it is at least a good, a good development there. However, countywide, as it's been well reported, they did have a serious outbreak at a nursing home in in the city of Woodland. And that accounts for a large number of those cases that that you see on the on the right side there on the Yolo County side of the chart. Testing is still frustratingly low countywide, and that's that's a national issue as well. But that is a data point that I would like to see much more activity there. But there's only so much our county public health officials can do and that we can do on that. But yeah, there are 146 cases countywide, actually 151 is today. Unfortunately, there have been 10 deaths. We did have some last week. Actually, there were, there were actually two new ones reported today in county wise. That brings the total to 12. Skipping down, just a snapshot again of the public service calls that we've been receiving, the numbers continue to be lower than than normal for the same reporting period during last year. But I think it's worth pointing out, particularly on the the fire responses, but also on police responses, the amount of traffic on the streets, given that it's it's at a very minimal amount. There's also not a lot of vehicular incidents that would normally be responded to. So again, I I I wouldn't indicate that those numbers are are a a trend that we should expect to see continue or that we would be seeing if we were in this emergency situation. But it is at least notable that at least it hasn't gone way up because of medical calls and that sort of thing. So just something we'll continue to watch. The public health order, the enforcement side of it. I want to apologize, I actually had these numbers transposed last week. So I I reported it backwards to you. But we have had more reports in the last few weeks, and that mainly is due to the fact that we've been publicizing the order more and our request for people to ask questions and 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 report issues that they see out there. Most of the issues that are being reported at this stage have to do with either residential properties, parks, or a few are related to businesses. But I want to note that we did make some changes this week because we are kind of transitioning to that phase where we're expecting people to follow the order in the public and and take it seriously. And we do want to hear about it if we're seeing trends in certain parks or other places that that isn't happening. And so to encourage that, we we put more upfront information on our website about how to file a report. West Connect is is one of the main ways to do that. It was a little, a little bit difficult to find the link to report previously. So just this week, we elevated that, announced the top line on West Connect. So that should be much easier. The link is right there. The code enforcement line continues to be the the place to call the to file reports. And our code enforcement manager and and staff in the police department are busy following up on those. We do follow up on every single one. I think the main thing, though, that I note in terms of the public reports, what we're going to be doing is watching those trends. That if there's a particular location or park where there's continued activity, we want to know about it so we can take action, both in terms of communication. Communication really is the number one thing we can do, but also if needed, do some proactive outreach there. Moving on to the call center update, nothing really new here. We did see a similar volume of calls and calls by subject didn't change all that drastically. It is notable, though, we still are having a higher number of calls to the call center, of course, because our buildings are closed, as we'd expect. But color works operations and maintenance related to this are reporting that they're still able to maintain the number of service calls they're getting in the field with their reduced shift approach. So so far, so good there. And from what I'm told, people in the field are healthy. We do have a couple of instances where we have had some some positive, you know, tests, but we're working through that. And thus far, the impact on employees and services has not been affected by that current situation. But obviously, that'll be the number one thing we're tracking going forward. I'm going to skip ahead now to sort of the end of the report. But let me, let me stop actually on the social media update. We did include the updated report on some of the data on what was the most popular on each of our platforms and other information there. Also, there's a link on ZenCity table that has some data on what ZenCity has been observing in terms of trends, in case you want to check that out on your own there. So that's the communication side. Skipping ahead now towards the end of the report, I wanted to note a couple of things. We talked about CDVG a little bit earlier and duly noted, we will. I don't think we were planning on bringing that forward before we do a budget workshop in May. But it certainly makes sense to to hold on making an allocation until we give you a better sense of the financial picture ahead. Related, though, on in terms of business impacts, I I mentioned this earlier in a in a report a few weeks ago. There was a survey conducted by the Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with our economic development and housing staff. It was fairly early in the process, but the goal was to reach out to the business community, get a sense of the impacts that they're seeing, get a sense of how many of them are still operating and what we can do to start to help them with resources and connections to get through this this emergency situation. And the data is there. There's a lot of good work that went into the survey and a lot of good takeaways. I won't go into detail on it. But I will say that the information that was obtained from it, we're going to do a couple of things with it. One, because it was done fairly early in the process, we are actually going to go back out to the respondents and hopefully get other data as well, just to see how things are going now and focus on things that can be done looking ahead. But also, as we design potential responses, whether it be through CBPG funds or other potential programs, and I'm not necessarily talking loan funding or some of the things that cities have been, other cities have been doing, but more direct assistance to businesses and in ways that we can help. That would be on the list, but it's not the only thing. We're going to use the survey data to inform that work as well. So looking ahead to the next meetings, next week, we will have a pretty thorough update on projects, both development projects, real estate projects, and and also capital projects in the city. On the real estate side, we're going to be focusing on giving you a sense of impacts to projects. Some are still moving ahead as planned, others are slower. But also, we'll address the topic of if we need to be looking at extensions to current entitlements, that would be the time we would, we would raise that for your direction. And then on capital projects, it's kind of a combination of giving you an update on major CIP projects, but also giving you a sense of within those projects how they're being funded as a precursor to the budget. Just to give you an idea, I can tell you the the direction I've been giving staff when it comes to funding any project, but especially capital projects, is that some of them have what I describe as unrestricted or more flexible funding, general sources, everything from general fund to some of the tax measures. And and at least for right now, we're not saying stop everything, but we are making notes of which which projects have those funding sources because those, as you know, are the ones that will be, wanting to make sure we are careful about going forward until we know more of the financial picture ahead. So that'll be the 29th. On May 6, we'll come back for a regular council meeting, much like we had tonight. So you'll have some regular business items on there. We may get into, as I mentioned before, at least an introduction of what to expect on the May 13 budget workshop, just to give you an idea of what we're going to be covering and see if there's anything we're missing that you'd like us to cover specifically between then and the next week. And then on the 13th, we'll we'll dig into the financial impacts of the of the COVID-19 emergency on the city. It also happens to be the week that the the current local emergency declaration expires. So if it makes sense at that time to take that up again, we'll do so. And I think we'll make that decision in the next couple of weeks. And then May 20th is another regular council meeting. And it'll also be an opportunity to touch on something that we started working on, both in the EOC team and in the forward planning team that I asked our deputy city manager to head up. They've been coming up with lots of good ideas and and noting things that we should be thinking about that are not real immediately in front of us, but are out there in the months ahead. So related to that, I wanted to make sure that we were thinking about the next phase of of the emergency response. Right now, we're in the seventh week of of this process, and it very much has been focused on the city's emergency operation actions, everything that's in this report, really. They've been very immediate day to day responses. But but as things start to evolve, and I'm not making any projections about public health order amendments or or return to normalcy at all. But I will say that we need to be prepared for that process and 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 what that looks like for the city. So there are a couple of things in this report I wanted to highlight. The main one is that we're going to start to develop what I'm calling a resiliency framework for the city. The goal here is that as things develop, we want to be able to respond and be smart about it and be thoughtful about how we do it. And that has everything to do from the city's budget, what I just talked about in terms of what we're going to start with on May 13, but also going ahead to making sure we're, we're giving you all the right information to make good decisions and and be, albeit some of those are going to be difficult decisions ahead. That's the the paramount issue is making sure that we're on top of our of our local finances. Secondly, is as the reopening process starts to develop, it's going to be a slow roll. We know that. It's not going to be a a switch that goes on. But particularly with our city services, we need to be thoughtful about as things start to happen. You know, we do a lot as a city in West Sacramento, everything from the rec center to the community center, to to preschools, daycare, everything in between. We need to be thoughtful now about what it looks like as the health order changes. The one on the immediate horizon is there, there could be changes, say, to childcare that could affect our ability to run some of our summer programs. So we need to be thinking about, are we going to be doing that? How are we going to be doing it? And so each of these topics will have a a team of staff that will be engaged and and working through some of the the issues and decision making. And on this one, that team will be really important in a few months ahead as we deal with those those changes. Also, it's very important that we learn from this. I mean, you heard me say this before, that there, there are amazing things happening on on the staff level that people are just making adoptions and and evolving processes and making do with what we have. We were, I think, better prepared than we maybe thought we were, at least, at least what I was afraid we were to move to a remote work environment. But that's not to say there weren't important, important takeaways from that, gaps that we noticed, things that we want to make sure we we improve and learn from and prepare for. Because as the mayor talked about earlier, there's no guarantee. This is, this is a one and done process. In fact, I think it is very likely that we need to be prepared to return to this environment should the need arise, whether it's because of a an another local outbreak or next year. So there are many things we're learning right now that we can take with us and better prepare the city, whether it's software and hardware, but also the soft skills, too, all the things that our staff need to need to know, be able to do, and and processes that we can adapt to be able to keep business going when we're in this situation. And then lastly, it's it's starting to get to a a recovery reinvestment is what what I'm calling it. It's a topic, unfortunately, we know all too well from the last recession, but it's also one that I think we did well in in the spirit of the the Progress Act Committee, putting together a group that is at the forefront of positioning the city. If there are federal funds or state funds that come down for stimulus, making sure that our projects and our programs are well positioned for that. But also, even if there isn't, making sure that we're being very smart about the limited tools and funding resources we have locally to get the most return on that investment to help the recovery along. So we have some really good staff that are that are equipped to do that, but we need to, we need to put the pieces together and and start thinking about it as we go ahead. So that's related a little bit to the discussion earlier about advocacy. We, I'll tell you that just today, we had a meeting with Holland and Knight, a virtual meeting, of course, where Rich Gold and and some of the other staff at Holland and Knight that you know, joined the exec team and our EOC team on a call. And we talked about positioning the city, at least, as uncertain as it is of what's going to happen, if there's going to be an assist, direct assistance to cities, getting our list together and making sure that it's consistent with what is happening, whether it's through the National League of Cities of the US Conference of Mayors, all the things that we're already involved with, and making sure that we're positioning the city for those, hopefully, funds, but also the input that we're giving them. Hopefully, they'll listen and amend some of the the programs that are out there to cities' benefit. So like I said, we'll have a group of teams that will address each of those topics, and that work will be starting in earnest, I would say, in in May. But we want to get ready for that as we go ahead. So I will stop there and 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 see if there's any questions. I do want to, again, acknowledge that we did receive, I think, one public comment on this item. So before you take action, you might want to address that. So thank you. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Yeah, yes, we did receive one public comment on this item. And Madam Port, do you want to, and and just for the record, indicate who the comment was received from? Every member of the council has received the full comment, and the comment is available also in a file that's that's accessible to all of the members of the public on the website as well. But Madam Port, would you please report the name of the comment, the commenter that we received?
Yes, comment for this item was received from Samantha White.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to go with a pre-framed of questions or comments. All right. So we'll, we're going to go with a pre-framed of questions or comments. And any members of the council have any of those this evening on this item? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the CDBG funding, what I've learned from the League of Cities is that eligible users include rental assistance. And given that in our eviction moratorium, we did not set a timeline for repayment. That, you know, unless we change our eviction moratorium. That it, all the, all of the rent will be due the day that our eviction moratorium sunsets. And that may be a huge hardship if individuals do not have jobs. Or unemployment insurance is not going to cover. Being able to pay for that and that makes them vulnerable to an eviction. So if unless we provide some timeframe for payment, you know, whether it be four months or six months. I'm, I'm looking at seeing whether we can use some of the CDBG grant money to provide assistance. For those that are in most need to be able to preserve housing. Otherwise, I anticipate there will be. A mass exodus of those that are in their rental properties going into homelessness and will be having a bigger problem in our city. And, and also the business impact survey, I appreciate the information and the background. I think it's essential that we know what's going on. In our businesses, I participated in a Chamber of Commerce forum last week and. Heard some helpful information. Our former planning commissioner, Parveen Tumber, was very helpful. In being able to explain some of the barriers that experiencing the paycheck protection program. Which was renewed with an additional 310 million. In COVID 3.5 stimulus that was approved in, in the Senate, now moving over to the House. And so looking for ways maybe that we can provide some support in either. You know, highlighting what we can do to shed some more light on that or work with the chamber to. Let our businesses know that, that. There are going to be banks that will be able to help them out. Some of the smaller banks are going to be able to help them out. I understand that it was really the bigger corporations. That were able to get the initial round of money, but some of the smaller businesses like those in our city. Had a difficult time and weren't approved. Or they were, they were approved, but then they were denied because they ran out of money. So I'm hoping that. This next round will be able to provide that additional support. Also looking at what I've heard was going to be an update on our public health order to include masks. I think that's important. I've heard a lot of complaints. People have informed me and I passed that along to Aaron. That there's an interest for people to wear masks, such as a grocery store. Employees so that people who are, you know, vulnerable. Who are going in, the elderly and the vulnerable populations who go in, they feel that they're being protected from the employees that are there. So just want to continue to impress that that I think is, is helpful, although social distancing is, is still. A, a better requirement to make sure that nobody catches COVID-19, but I think that. Wearing masks is, is an additional step to preventing the spread. So just, those are my comments for now, but also hoping to see what we can do with the CDBG funding. In providing that additional support for rental assistance. And on the resiliency plan, Aaron, I think that's a, that's a good plan. I'm, I'm looking at it as a dimmer as compared to a switch, turning the light switch back on. It's going to take some time and it's going to be a process and the governor in his press conference today did not give any timeline. Which means that as, as you referenced, that there's a lack of testing. Although the president did commit prior to his press conference that there's going to be a significant amount of testing available, but. There are still some milestones we need to meet, such as flattening the curve and. For a period of two weeks and also having sufficient testing for all jurisdictions. Where it's not widespread or accessible for all individuals. And the seratology, just being able to check to see if you have the antibodies, you know, there's hit and misses. There were a couple of studies done in California. But I understand that that is not necessarily a good predictor whether or not you have the antibodies and whether or not you can. Cannot catch, you know. Co-COVID-19 again. We're still learning a lot. The sciences definitely needs a more work for us to feel. That we can go back to doing some level of business in the future. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aaron, thanks again for the update and I'm glad to see, you know, we can't take a week off, obviously, but the numbers. Obviously look to flatten a little bit, but well, well, I think. I, I, I think as a city, we need to be, continue to be. Very vigilant and making sure people know that this is, we're still, we still need to get through this, right? And the messaging you, you highlighted and the communications. Again, I want to applaud the city for just being very crisp and very direct on the need to stay home and the need to. Shelter in place and practice social distancing. We just, I think of the public who, who those who are watching. It's, it's very easy to kind of fall into, especially a day like today where it's beautiful and you want to go out and see folks, we're not. We're, we're not enough, don't have enough data really. We're not enough testing is going on to really understand where we are and. I don't want to send a message really that we are. Out of the woods yet or thinking, or at least. This was brought up about the reopening of West Sacramento. It just, we just need to be really mindful. We talked about this last week. About the need to just be really. And direct with our, with our, and honest with our, with our residents and neighbors that. We just don't know enough and I worry about that still and. And I think a lot of us are tied to our desk at home, working and trying to deal with stuff. So not leaving the house seems easy, but. It is tempting to sort of maybe kind of get past that. And. So again, I ask our residents to please try to practice social distancing, distancing and please. Try to stay at home as much as possible. I do want to bring up a couple of things. One is first on the business impact survey. I think that's the right approach is to use the data and seek more. And, and really not to, I've been asking this for some time. Is everyone needs help right now, and I think I'm conscious of the fact that. We, we're not going to be able to help everybody. We want to and that's where our heart is and that's what's good about us. But we really need to make these policy decisions. It's, it's not a whole lot of money. Coming out of CDBG funding we're getting. And I just want to be really conscious and strategic and thoughtful about where the best use of that money is. That survey is a really good tool to understand where our business community is. It was early in, they, they went out and got it early, which I applaud the chamber and the city. For doing, gives us an early look, but it's already over a month ago that we, that, that closed off. So. Would be helpful to kind of get more data and understand where the help really needs to be, where we can be most effective with the few dollars we have. I also want to speak a little bit about the, kind of the. The budgeting, because I know we spoke after last week's meeting, Aaron, and. And I know we're, we're, we keep pointing towards the May timeframe. And, and I know you mentioned tonight that we're looking at projects or, or we're talking about that and. It is important that we get into the, the, the setting of expectations for our residents, for even for ourselves. About what post-COVID. Well, not just when it is, but what it looks like for us and. Because again, I, I think what we're learning throughout is we just don't know where this bottom ends. Nobody can tell and so we don't know. I appreciate the, the, the gravity of the decision-making coming our way and you. You starting to, to. And reach out to us and let us know there might be some really. This big discussions going, but I also, I think going into, I, 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 I don't like. Frankly, kind of pointing towards one or two meetings where we're going to make key decisions. And I, I sort of for the next round, I kind of want to understand maybe some other actions you're taking. In the short term to sort of maybe start to. And as you pointed out today, kind of on projects, how you're looking at them. But maybe get a sense of where the staff is going, what measures are being taken as well. To sort of start to install the, the cult, the right culture of understanding before we. How we're managing dollars or maybe dollars that we thought we had just a month ago or two ago, kind of where we're going to go. So. I, I think that's something I, I just, again, I. Budgeting is not an event, it's not an event in the, in the meeting, it's a process. And I think we're, we're, we've been trying to set the right tone here that we just don't know enough. I think when I talked last week, you threw out the, the fact. And I, and you can correct me, Aaron, if I'm wrong, but I think you throw out the fact that. We get half a million dollars on, in a quarter from both IKEA and La Mesa RV. And that's right, or I could be wrong, in a quarter. And both of those are shut down right now. And you juxtapose that against that kind of revenue not coming in right now. It's, it, it, that's going to be impactful for us. So. Again, those are the kind of things that I'm thinking about and I think our public. Needs to understand that we don't take these decisions lightly about. Closing or, or enforcing the, the stay-at-home. Effects and the impacts it has on employees and, and our jobs and, and, and our businesses. And we're going to feel this for some time. So. Again, just to kind of understand maybe some of the interim steps you're starting to take might be helpful. To know that where staff is going and measures they may be taking. And, and finally, I do applaud the resiliency plan and planning that you're doing. I would caution against sort of making it feel as though it's a future state sort of thing that, that, that sort of. You know, we're learning from the innovation, we're learning from. And then that's all good, but there is a lot of it that's, that's, that's now, not knowing when we'll be able to. Have some core services or really pertinent services available to, to the, to the public. It, it, you know, it's not so futuristic to me. It's like we, we may need to adopt some new practices or functions. To just get back to some level of functioning, whether it's around planning and what's happening over the desk. To make sure people can get permits for if, if we open that part up or, or some other service we provide. And I think you're starting to get to that, but. Again, what, what we've learned in COVID is a lot of corporations, mine, others had to learn to stay at home. But whole bodies of people, thousands of people to work from home inside 30 days. And that's never been tested before in any. Realm ever. And for the most part. State government's doing it, local government's doing it, corporations are doing it, small businesses are doing it. And they're innovating and that's good, but how do you, how do you continue to function going forward? Where do you need to make any short-term investments to so that a short-term practice or policy issue? That you may need just to kind of get some function of business of our, the city business going. Would be something that I, I don't, again, I get you're just getting into it, but the resiliency means we can operate. In a very fluid situation, which we may have to be for the next few months, if not longer. So. Again, I, I'm just reading through the, the staff report. You know, it gets kind of state in the future, state that we can use some of that innovation, but what I'm trying to get to is some of it may be very present in its need. And, and then finally, just around the language of reopening West Sacramento. As, as I think it's necessary. But I, I do applaud the governor and the language where you, they're using around the state around. You know, and the setting of expectation with our residents about what it will mean. It's. And I know the mayor, I think it was at your last meeting, he talked about being on task force, look at. Securing resources for testing and there, there's milestones we will, we will need to meet and, and I'm not. Opposed to the idea of reopening, but it will, it will, it will be, in my mind and everything that I've been able to pay attention to will be. Very, very dependent upon our ability to, to rapidly test, to rapidly understand where. Our ability to react to infectious cases, to our ability to. Deploy resources and, and, and monitor hospital beds and, and any other services and. With the fact that I appreciated the mayor's comments upfront about. The, the, the president's budget, it was ludicrous. The sort of make a statement about the, the fact that cities or counties. Aren't eligible for, or shouldn't be eligible for this because of the reasons you stated earlier, at least at the White House view and. When we're bearing the brunt of a lot of these reactions. So. Securing dollars for testing and for the ongoing management of it. Is hugely important to our ability to reopen. And so again, I just really caution as we, we think about reopening. West Sacramento, which I think we all want to. I miss. I miss so much of our community being out and, 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 and sharing time with friends and neighbors and, and. Just everything we, we got to do in our city and, and. I don't think I ever took it for granted, but I really do miss it. But we do not at all want to put the, the community's health in jeopardy and. And create more problems. Without think, thinking of having the public understand what those milestones are for us. So I, I agree with sort of that. How we approach reopening West Sacramento isn't necessarily a timetable. It's more of a milestones in terms of are, are we. Capable of addressing certain things along the way. And are we equipping, I think this is the way to think about those CDBD funds. It's a way to think about any other funding that comes. Outside of direct contributions in cities is equipping, equipping nonprofits as Mayor Protem Sandin is working on. Equipping businesses with the same sort of resiliency efforts that we have here. So. Again, that, those are some thoughts I have. I just want to, I didn't want to, sorry for going on too long, but. There's a lot of good stuff in the report. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and just want to provide you with some of that feedback. But thank you, Aaron, and, and staff for all your work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Other comments or questions? Resident council?
Okay, I, then I would just, thanks for all the comments and Aaron, thank you for the, for the report and. This is one of the few meetings where we have a larger number of our staff present and thanks, so thank you to. The staff that are on the, on the meeting call and hopefully you'll relate to your colleagues in whatever way that you can. You know, how, how deeply grateful and proud we are of the work that's happening and. We know how challenging it is, both in terms of all the changes, but also, you know. Home and family and other, other things that are, that are, that are, that are out there that also. That make, that make it hard, as, as my colleagues have all said. And I know it's true for, for the members of the council too, you know, we're not. We all have, you know, we all have our lives too, just like our neighbors, everyone else in the community and. You know, folks on this council are struggling with their nonprofit organization, trying to, trying to make its payroll and its budget and. Folks trying to help local small businesses, you know, get their PPP allocations and redesign their entire, their job and. The jobs of hundreds of others and folks trying to make sure that, 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 you know, the children. Are kept safe and the domestic violence doesn't skyrocket and there's just, as well as raising, raising families, educating kids. And everything else. And, and so the council is a snapshot of our, of our community in so many ways and so is our staff. And so thank you. To everybody for all the, for all the work and the, the leadership and the inspiration and the strength that you're demonstrating and modeling for the, for the community as well. And I know. We all hear it at the food bank, food distributions and in the supermarket through the muffled sounds of the masks. You know, how much it's appreciated in the community that we're all standing together and the solidarity makes, it might make such a great, such a great difference. The, so I, I think, I think this week's report really points out some of these key issues. I, I do want to agree with Councilmember Ledesma about the. The reopening West Sacramento framing and, and I, I also want to be supportive of that and cautious about it as well. That we, we just don't know. And I, I think it's, it's, it can be very unhelpful to sort of every week say, oh, the governor still didn't say. Or the public health officer didn't say, so let's check with him next week. As though we're a week away from a, from a significant reopening of the community. That's just not the case. We know from what the governor has said, from all of the guidelines that, that from the public health community that. That the Yolo Health Officer is following as well. That those metrics, those criteria, the process, the timeframe that, that Mr. Ledesma laid out is what's going to drive this. And for the most part, that's likely to be at least in the midterm. It's not going to be next week. And you know, as I, as I reported earlier, you know, today on the call with the public health officer and the mayor, one of the other mayors said. So is it, you know, so this weekend, is it okay for families to get together for a birthday party, at least have the cousins over? Public health officer's response was absolutely not, you know, whatever, of all the changes that we are considering, that might be the last on the list because. The highest rates of transmission are in community care facilities and among family members and friends. You're much, much more likely to, to contract the virus in that way. And so as we, as, as, as we convey this, the, the, not, not just that we hope people will continue to comply, but the urgency. That we do so, so that we don't experience a spike. And so that not only do we protect ourselves and our community, but also that the public health officials that are evaluating this and the governor who's evaluating this. Can see the metrics play out, that they can see for sure that we are complying and that we are seeing no, no, not, no. we are seeing no significant rising cases and no new hospitalizations and no new deaths. We have to deliver that, even if all you care about is reopening the city and opening all the businesses. Those are the things that we have to accomplish first, at first, because we know that the governor has provided that. And we can be sure of that. Second is, you know, that I know we're all following the science. One of the trend that we are seeing, not just in in our community, but but all over the place is that, you know, there had been some attention to these protests, including across the protests in our city, folks who don't believe any of the science or and don't believe that there should be any of these orders or protections in place. But the other challenges is that we're that we're seeing reported from public health officers and law enforcement around the country is erosion in compliance with the order by folks who know much, much, much better than that. And in fact, what's happening is folks are, you know, I just read a study from Stanford and 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 so I think it's okay if I go sit in the park. Or I just read a study from some other place and it said it's okay if we do this. And so the the two ends of the spectrum are where we're seeing the most erosion in fidelity to to what is the best public health advice. Those who aren't, who don't believe in the science and people who think that they are more able to assess the science than the public health, public health community. We all know, I think collectively, that the public health orders work because we're all doing them together. The science is changing every moment. What we know and the and the research results are changing every moment. But that isn't for each of us to determine. That's the purpose of the of state law vesting in the public health officer. Not with each individual city council member and school board member and everyone else, the responsibility to interpret that science. And so you know, my advice is that we we not contribute to that. And then if, you know, folks who are watching, don't listen to us about what, you know, our own individual opinions, we may have them, we can share them on Facebook with our friends and family. But where the advice and information about what to do to protect yourself and others as part of the health orders should be coming from the public health officer, and it is. And they are on a daily basis reevaluating the orders in order to maximize that protection. And so just encourage each of us to not contribute to 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 sort of playing lay scientist in ways that we're not qualified to in order to to continue to promote compliance with with that order. Now, on the the staff report itself, I also pretty much appreciate the what's been proposed in the resilience framework that you've done, Mr. City Manager. I do also want to agree with Mr. Ledesma. I think, you know, as we charted out our agenda approaches at the beginning of this process, the notion of these topical meetings made sense and it still does. But I, but I struggle, I'm still struggling with the notion that we'll be eight weeks into it by the time that we really dive into the fiscal issues. And we're not looking for the perfect answers or for complete answers or for answers that know all the all the possible futures. But we do need to get into that into that issue in a very real way, even if it's in pieces. So and so I just want to, you know, I don't know what the answer is. I'm not saying schedule for next week, but I but I do, I I guess I'm anxious about continuing to say, well, we'll deal with that in the middle of May. And and the notion that we're in a two year budget and therefore budget is not that important right now, that not until next year. The two, the whole two year budget concept is really, you know, not really in play right now. I mean, it'll help us focus the way that we consider the fiscal implications. But it's not a reason for us not to really pay pay close attention to the fiscal issues from the beginning, because so many of our other choices depend on it and have implications for it as well. CDBG being a good example. The CDBG allocation was made not to cities in order to help us with the response efforts. And so that's got to be certainly in conjunction with the rest of our work. But, you know, I also want to, I am not interested in make, that money was not provided to us for the purpose of simply giving out cash transfers to other to others. It was for the purpose of buttressing our ability to deal with the with the with the basic infrastructure of the community to deal with the relief efforts and the rebuilding efforts, the recovery efforts and the support efforts. And so you know, Sacramento has much more money than us. They got millions and millions and millions of dollars because they're a large city. But and they are, they're working within the framework of their measure U, which is our measure and equivalent around around inclusive development and inclusive economic prosperity. I think there there might be something to recommend in that space. But I certainly am not in a place where we're in a position to be just giving out cash when when we have some significant challenges that we have to meet for the communities as a whole, particularly for those who are in the most economically precarious positions. The other thing I would say about the resilience strategy, and I completely agree with Mr. Ledesma, and I think you've done a great job so far, Aaron and John Robinson, at thinking of forward planning as forward planning being both four days from now and four months from now and a lesser extent, four years from now. But but his point is exactly on target in terms of being able to do both of those at the same time. There are so many divergent possibilities for what the future looks like. And so and probably the least likely outcome is an average of all those potential futures. You know, a future in which we have massive testing and contact tracing and and a supported isolation or a a structure, a future in which we're still sort of in seventy-five percent social distancing and sheltering or others. But during our strategic planning process, the council identified scenario planning as a as a tool that we ought to be using to think about our more general strategy. This is, this is the situation where that is particularly appropriate. We don't need seventeen scenarios, but about two or three scenarios that are different enough to give, to make sure that we are as we're evaluating and putting in place the both the immediate measures and thinking about whether context over the future. Having a having this framework exists in a way that looks ahead to a potential set of different scenarios will help us avoid the trap of just picking the one that seems the most normal or the most average of the ones that are that are ahead of us. While while planning for reopening and return to quote-unquote normalcy is the is the still one to plan for in many ways. It may not be the most likely. And the one, the other second and third choices for most likely are very, very different. And so we had to look at the, at these resiliency strategies for the framework in the life of those different in those different scenarios. But otherwise, I think you're here, you're, this is exactly on the right track. And I know Mr. Robinson's been working, he's been participating with me in the Harvard, Johns Hopkins, Bloomberg group as well and team, and they've been working really hard in order to both meet the current needs and plan effectively for the future. Thanks very much. All right. So Mr. Laurel, do you have anything else on this item before we conclude it?
No, I don't. Thanks for all the feedback tonight. I feel compelled to at least say that on the budget, we we are trying to get good information and we're doing our best to deliver that to you as quickly as possible, but definitely mindful of all the comments. I know everyone's anxious about it and we'll do our best to get it to you. It is in pieces. It was planned that way. We were thinking of May thirteenth as being the time we would have most complete information. But I can assure you, you're not going to be asked that night to make any drastic decisions. But we want to have good information. And so, but I appreciate the feedback tonight. We actually have a meeting tomorrow on that topic and we'll talk about the plan then. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Right then, we have the actual resolution twenty dash forty-six for action. And so Mayor Pro Tem Sandin, would you like to make a motion on this?
Thank you. I'll move the recommended action.
A second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Sandin and signed by Councilmember Guerrero that Resolution twenty dash forty-six be adopted. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin.
Aye. And so that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thanks again, Mayor Pro Tem Sandin. That brings us to, I'm thirteen A, Council Calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On council calendar for April twenty seventh, the River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority was originally scheduled. That's been canceled and we're looking to reschedule that sometime in June. So we're trying to find a date that works for everyone. So that's it for calendar, but I did want to take this opportunity as she's been on the last couple of meetings to introduce our new city clerk, Yashin Abbas. She's formerly with the, she's formerly the clerk of the board with the Port of Redwood City, and we are extremely happy to have her joining our team and joining us on these unprecedented recent council meetings. So want to turn it over to her. Say hi.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's certainly an interesting time to be joining an organization. But I'm getting a lot of guidance, doing distance learning. I'm really happy to be part of this team with such an outstanding city management and council leadership. And I look forward to working with everybody in person at some point.
All right. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Berlin. Ms. Berlin mentioned the River City Financing Authority, and I just, I did want to add to an earlier report that we we've been collaborating with River City Baseball, the River Cats organization and and the minor league baseball league around the concerns about there will not, you know, based on what the governor said, there will be no season this this year. And there are implications for stadium revenues and the bonds issued by the River City, River City Stadium Financing Authority. So we've been collaborating with the team management, but also with the minor league baseball as a whole and with the task force of mayors across the country and try to resolve some of these issues. And also there is a proposal that was, that's been put forward that we've been working on collaboratively on on some relief and support that would be particularly targeted priority to make sure that teams in local cities like ours can continue to make the bond payments on their facilities. So we'll, we'll, you know, we'll report back as as that proceeds. We still have a ways to go, but we're trying to get ahead of an issue that could be potentially challenging for the team and for the stadium itself. All right. Question on the calendar? Seeing non-city manager reports?
I just want to echo that we are very excited to have Yash on board. She's definitely proven her adaptability and nimbleness in the last several weeks here. And as you know, that's a, that's a, something we very much value in West Sacramento. So it's great to have her. Thanks.
Thank you. City, question for the city manager reports? City attorney reports?
Nothing to report tonight.
Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda either request. So is there a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Roscoe?
Still moved.
Oh, and signed by Councilmember Ledesma. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to adjourn?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin.
Aye. Motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a safe evening.
Thank you.